Welcome to City Hall, and before we call the meeting to order, let me just indicate that after this meeting, about 10:30 promptly, we shall gather back in here for commemoration service for the 25 years since the change of form of government here in Jackson, Tennessee. We look forward to that. We have family members representing the three plaintiffs in that litigation, so we look forward to really celebrating and commemorating that time that occurred about 25 years ago in our city. So we encourage you all to stay around. We've got to transform the meeting room with flowers. The girls are bent on having some fresh flowers here and doing some redecorating, so if you all will be cooperative in that matter, I'd appreciate it, but we'll gather back in here at 10:30 for that particular event. So, thank you. We'll call the meeting of the Jackson City Council, July 2, 2013, to order, and call on Councilman Charles Rump for our invocation and pledge. Please rise.
If you would, pray with me. Father, we come to you this morning acknowledging that you alone are worthy of our praise. We give you that praise and thank you for the many blessings that you have given us.
Yes.
We thank you for the wisdom and perseverance of the Buchanan, Brooks, and Seals families, and the many others like them. For if they had not been, if it hadn't been for them and their spirit, we would not be standing before you today. I ask for your wisdom and blessings on this body as we seek to do your will in everything we do. Be with us, give us knowledge and understanding as we seek your face daily. All this I pray in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anita, I think you can show all council members present for this meeting. Item four is approval of minutes of the June 4, 2013, City Council meeting. Council members have received a copy of those minutes, and if there are no additions or corrections, we'll let those minutes stand as received by y'all. Item five is the invitation to public comment, and I'll just simply tell you, if there's anyone here who would like to be heard on any item of new business, if you would let me know that, we'll be happy to call you up for those comments. We have one proclamation which we're going to read during this meeting in reference to our celebration today after this meeting in recognizing our warriors, Miss Genevieve Brooks, James Buchanan, and Reverend William K. Seals. So I'm going down and get the proclamation, ask the family members, if they're present, to join me at the podium for that presentation where we can make it a part of the minutes of this meeting. If any of the family members, y'all, y'all come on out, join us. And Harvey, if you will, why don't you introduce them as they're coming up?
Good morning. We have here so far my eldest brother-in-law, Buchanan, from Atlanta, Georgia, my grandson, Jeremiah Love, my wife, Sharon Buchanan, and my sister-in-law, Vanessa Buchanan. They more would be coming later.
She was a little shy. She didn't want to come up here, but we pulled her out the back row back there and got her up there. Thank you all for being here to accept this proclamation. We have three, and I think daughter Reverend Seals will be here at 10:30, so we'll hold her copy of the proclamation at that time. Let me read this and make it part of today's meeting. Whereas a landmark federal judicial decision was handed down on March 11, 1988, that significantly improved the way our local city government had operated since its founding in 1821. The new form of government included the election of a mayor and nine elected city council members, thereby allowing for representation from the entire community. And whereas the effort to eradicate disenfranchisement and unequal representation was led by Mrs. Genevieve Brooks, Mr. James Buchanan, and Reverend William K. Seals. Their legacy of greatness teaches us all a great lesson in perseverance, persistence, professionalism, and dedication when rallying for a proper and just cause. And whereas after a long tedious trial from 1977 until 1988, these three plaintiffs battled in federal court to end the oligarchy rule of government in Jackson, Tennessee, and were rewarded with the words that they and their followers had prayed to hear for decades, the city of Jackson was operating under an unconstitutional form of government and would have to change immediately. And whereas world changers, life changers, justice fighters, freedom fighters, these are the shoulders on which we stand, balanced and unwavering. Following their example, we shall continue to learn, to grow, and to fight for freedom, justice, and equality so that all people will be better served. We shall be vigilant, we shall be alert, we shall meet the challenges that arise with victory in mind, and the resources of truth, integrity, and dignity to defend us. We shall do these things because we are the citizens' sons and daughters of these three great civil rights activists who only wanted things to be true to our God, true to our Constitution, and true to our native and newly possessed lands. And whereas these three standard bearers taught us the most important resource in our nation's founding, the right as American citizens to actively participate in the operation of our local, state, and national government, which is most vital to our civil liberties and the protection of these rights for future generations to come. Now therefore, I gerrig as Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, July 2, 2013, as Mrs. Genevieve Brooks, Mr. James Buchanan, and Reverend William K. Seals' day, and urge all citizens to recognize and commemorate the significant contributions these three individuals contributed to our community. Let's give these three individuals and the family members a big hand, if you would. will be given to her at that time. We have item seven is first readings. We have done the second readings. We have none. We'll go directly to new business. Item nine is the election of Vice Mayor for a one-year term. Is there any nomination?
Mayor, I would like to first extend my appreciation to your office as well as the council for my term that is ending today as Vice Mayor, and would like to nominate Councilwoman Foote for this position.
Councilwoman Foote has been nominated. Any other nominations? Is there a motion that nominations be closed?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor of the election of Councilwoman Foote as the next Vice Mayor for the next year? Please vote.
And the vote passes eight in favor and one abstaining.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman. We have a public hearing for approval to apply for the 2013 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and I think we have Lieutenant Lankmis here from PD to give us a little information on that grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the Edward Byrne's Justice Assistance Grant that we apply for. This is the public hearing regards to that. The total grant for this year is $42,307, which we split 50/50 with the county.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. This particular grant does require a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing now to see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this motion. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Item three is consideration of a contract for a qualified consulting firm for that professional planning, urban design, and public meeting facilitation services in preparation of the civic master plan.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning, Stan.
You have the materials that I've put in your packet regarding this master plan and the importance of this master plan. Jackson is blessed with a rich history, a quality of life, and a great people and community that we want to make sure is preserved into the future. And we have had a legacy of preparing plans to help guide our future, and in Jackson we've done an excellent job of seeing goals and objectives and pushing toward them to create an environment and an economy that is recognized by many today, and we've received awards that shows that we are recognized as being a livable place, a place where you can do business and be successful. And we don't want to just rest on those laws, but we want to make sure that going into the future, we move with the times, we prepare ourselves for the economic future that we're going to face, and also that we protect areas and preserve them from degradation that might affect our property base and affect our ability to do things in the future. So, we feel as your planning staff and as your Director of Planning that the most important piece of that is to have this master plan, this vision, so that we can not only set goals that we can work toward and achieve, but also to look at what we have and what we need to have, and to set ourselves on a pace to reach that next level that I feel Jackson can as the regional hub of West Tennessee that it is. I have John Houseal here today, and he represents the project team of Houseal Levine and Kimley Horn, and I'll ask him to come at this time. He's going to give you a short presentation.
Good morning. Now you can sit. Thank you for being here this morning.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. Not used to sitting for a presentation, so we'll give this a whirl. Again, my name is John Houseal. I'm a principal and co-founder with the firm Houseal Levine Associates, and we work across the country, and about 95% of our clients are municipalities. And what we do is we do urban planning, community planning, economic development, and urban design. And our focus is to assist cities position themselves better for the future. So if you can bear with me for about 10 minutes or so, I'll go through a small presentation here. There'll be a lot of information, but I'll try to go through it quickly and succinctly. If I talk a little too quickly, I apologize. I'm one of nine kids, so it was sort of a survival mechanism to talk fast, so. Again, the team that we have put together for the project is Houseal Levine Associates. Is the lead. Kimley Horn is our subconsultant. A little bit about Houseal Levine. We're an award-winning firm, one of the most award-winning firms in the last five years in the American Planning Association, specializing in community planning, urban design, and economic development. We've assisted more than 200 municipal clients in just the last nine years with city planning. We're built on a foundation of better outreach, more creative approaches to planning, graphic communication, integration of newest technologies, and client satisfaction. We're lucky enough to have as a subconsultant on this, Kimley Horn Associates. We've worked with Kimley Horn in several states on several different assignments, including work throughout the Midwest, north of Atlanta, throughout the Chicago regional area, and elsewhere. They're an engineering and environmental and architecture and planning firm with local ties here to not only Tennessee but to Jackson itself. I'm trying to get this to the fans. Apologize for the slow side. One of the things, I won't go through in detail, it's in your handout I gave you, but this is a presentation that we gave in front of the selection committee and staff. We did a preliminary understanding to sort of highlight different areas of Jackson. We took a look at the regional airport and its impact, some of the older commercial areas that exist throughout the city. I'm not going to go through all this in detail. Really sort of a plan that needs to recognize the exceptional recreation and tourism opportunities that you have here. You're really a tremendous resource as some of your local colleges. I mean, you've got a level of higher education network that most communities would just really be very jealous of having something so nice. The downtown itself, and then reestablishing and recognizing the importance of Jackson as a hub city for the region. Again, we went through this in a little bit more detail. When you're looking at a master plan, you have to look at the relevant project experience of a number of different things. Economic development is vital in master planning, comprehensive planning, the corridors that run through your city, the historic and older downtown, sustainability and transportation and mobility are all components that have to factor into the master plan. We've worked on more than 50 comprehensive plans throughout the city in about 14 different states. And you can see some of them up there right now. These are just some of the ones that we've worked with. I'll just go through these pretty quickly. Downers Grove Comprehensive Plan in Illinois, it won the state's top planning award two years ago for the state of Illinois. Next one is Jackson, Missouri. This won Missouri's Top Planning Award in 2009 for a comprehensive master plan. Here's another example of one in Muskogee, Oklahoma, the comprehensive plan and the follow-up to the zoning ordinance to make sure it was implemented. And then a town that we think has a lot of similarities in terms of your physical and built form, which is Marion, Iowa Comprehensive Plan followed up by a zoning ordinance. So, you a little bit of an idea. Some of the work that we did with Kimley Horn, to give an example, this is in Dunwoody, Georgia, North Shellerford Road Subarea, Dunwoody Village Master Plan, all Houseal Levine and Kimley Horn. And here's some work that Kimley Horn has done specifically in the Tennessee area, the Green Infrastructure Plan for Memphis. And here is just some of the local, specific Tennessee experience that Kimley Horn brings to our team. Basically, when you look at a planning assignment, planning has to do three things. It's that simple. You have to establish where you are right now. You have to establish where you want to go, and you have to establish how you are going to get there. That, in essence, is planning. And we have broken it down into these six following components. First one is project initiation and outreach, where we meet with the steering committee, city staff, and brand the comprehensive plan, the master plan. We do press releases, community workshops, business workshops. Businesses have a distinct set of issues that residents typically are not aware of. Does the sign code work? Does it not work? Are the financing mechanisms in place? Is permitting or processing for businesses onerous and not smooth? We need to find these things out. Key person interviews and focus group discussions, these are all some of the things we do. Interactive project websites, online questionnaires, and mapping. Here's an example of a proprietary mapping tool we developed that we would employ that allows people from the comfort of their own home to map issues, comments, write online, or they could go to the library and use a terminal there at one of the local universities. We explore all the existing conditions, zoning, demographics, a detailed market and economic analysis to find out where you may be bleeding money to other areas, as opposed to creating the industry to capture that money and employment here in Jackson. We want to make sure our plan recommendations are founded on market realities. We take a look at transportation, environmental, image and character, population and projection growths, and bring that all together. Here's some of the market studies we do as part of master planning. Here's an example from Omaha, Nebraska, city of Chicago zoning and market analysis. Then we get into the visioning aspect. Where do we want to go? We have a series of sirets, and from that we develop growth scenarios, whittle that down into preferred options, and present those to the community, steering committee, city council. Here's an example of some of the work that we're currently doing in Flint, Michigan. A couple months ago, we held a workshop at Mott Community College. We had 590 people show up. Our outreach is recognized as being some of the best in the country for all types of communities, from those that are not as well-off to very, very wealthy communities, from rural communities to very urban and everything in between. We then draft the actual plan itself, looking at land use and development, residential, commercial, and industrial areas, transportation, open space, recreation, and environmental features, community facilities, image and identity, sustainability. Here's some examples of sustainability typologies that we did for the city of Flint. We use this to derive neighborhood workshops, to derive a land use plan for the entire city. We also want to do some subarea planning for the city of Jackson. You can't address every area of the city in the same manner. You have very distinct areas. You have different districts. Old Hickory Boulevard downtown, University of Memphis Medical Center area, East Jackson, Lane College, North US 45 Bypass, and Bemis. These are all potential areas that could be subarea plantings, building by building, parcel by parcel, really specific planning for certain areas of the city. Every area will be examined, but some may require a heightened level. Here's some examples of subarea plans we've done as part of master plans in other communities, focusing on downtown, sense of place, architecture, even so far as to this one. If you look at those parking lots in the middle of a downtown, what would these look like if we were able to drop in three-story historic-looking buildings, to sort of stitch back the historic fabric of a downtown. Then it takes to step five is plan adoption. We go through the draft plan, steering committee, staff, community, open houses, and workshops, public hearing in front of the plan commission, and then final adoption by city council. One of the most important parts of a master plan is how you get it done. All of our plans provide a very detailed implementation matrix that says what you should be doing, who you need to partner with, how you get it paid for, and when you undertake a specific task to achieve an objective. All of these are measurable. We put in benchmarks and matrices to find out how you can get things done. And to give you a real quick example, city of Benton Harbor, Michigan, downtown is in pretty bad shape. This is a community that's going through some rough time. They have for a long time. As part of the master planning exercise there, we envisioned a big piece of property down by the river, vacant Sears store, used car dealership. People couldn't imagine it being something else. As part of the master plan, we envisioned this as being a large corporate campus, a large civic space, a large shopping area, right on the influx of a canal in the Saint Joe River. Nobody in the city could imagine it being this. But we got it in there. It spurred some excitement. We showed that financially it could work. Well, lo and behold, the site was purchased and cleared, and you can see a building there being built right now. A Fortune 100 company, Whirlpool, last year opened up Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the New World Headquarters in downtown Benton Harbor on the Saint Joe River. They were able to go to the state and get the funding and financing in place. The thing that was the seed for all of this was a concept we developed as part of a master plan subarea. So it shows that, we show how to get things done, and it really does spur economic growth, employment prosperity, and these projects serve as a catalyst to see other things done. The areas around this was, there was a motel across the street that was a drug haven. There were vacant grocery stores. Everything around this is now being rebuilt, new banks, new restaurants. It's a catalyst for everything else. And it didn't come from the private sector side. Initially came from a seed planted in a concept of a master plan subarea like we want to do here. So again, we work across the country. These are just some of our recently adopted plans across the nation. We pride ourselves in taking a very practical but creative approach to planning. We don't just want to give you pretty pictures that are going to sit on a bookshelf. Today, documents live and breathe on the internet. They are your calling card. Businesses, employers, investors, developers, they will go to your website. They will look at your planning documents. They will say, "Jackson is serious about reinventing this place. I want to be a part of that reinvention." If they're willing to go there, I want to partner with them. I will go there with them. This is what your master plan has to be, and these are some of the places in the country where we've done it. We're one of the nation's leading firms when it comes to presentations and publications on innovation in planning and success in economic development. What you see on the screen are just some of the national conferences and lectures and publications my firm has given. And again, I think very quickly that we bring a commitment to our profession. We're not an engineering firm that says we do planning. We're not an architecture firm that says we do planning. We're not a landscape architecture firm that says we do planning. We're a community planning firm. It's what we do. It is our focus. We live and breathe it. In our plans, we won more plans from the APA than any other firm in the last five or six years. We provide experience from across the country, and with Kimley Horn's help, we provide local expertise and insight to Tennessee and to Jackson. We have a couple of people on our project team from Kimley Horn that were actually born and raised in Jackson and lived just outside the city. We bring a level of creativity that is recognized nationally. We will not just run something through the sausage grinder and give you a plan that was done someplace else. Everything here will be unique and specific to Jackson, to be as responsive and as innovative and as implementable as we possibly can for the city of Jackson. And with that, I know that was a lot very quickly, but I'd like to open it up to any questions that you may have for me regarding this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Stan, do we have a contract for this firm, or is that next meeting, or?
What's before you is a not-to-exceed amount, and we will just then develop a contract around that, not-to-exceed amount.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh-huh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
With respect to the master of the plan that you have, how does it correlate with the CRA, community redevelopment agencies? Would they be working together? And also in that plan, would there be community meetings to get suggestion and ideas from the citizens?
Yeah, yes, sir. Councilman Buchanan, the biggest component that we stressed in looking for a consulting firm is that we wanted a community vision, and we wanted to come from the people. So the public component is a huge part of this process. It will be staged all over the city and involve citizens from all over the city asking for input. Not only will it be public meetings, but it'll be other forms of involvement from the web for people that might not be able to be at public meetings. It'll involve other resources that we can put in place to involve as many as we can. The CRA, the redevelopment plans that we currently have, they will dovetail into this, just like our transportation plan that we just finished will dovetail into this. The civic master plan, the reason why we call it that and not a comprehensive land use plan is because we see this as a broader context plan than just looking at land use. We look at it as a framework for drawing in all of our institutional partners that are also doing master planning, like University of Memphis, West Tennessee Healthcare. All of this needs to fit together because Jackson is not one entity, one institution, one area. It is a sum of its parts, and we must be comprehensive in our looking at all these things because when the school system makes a decision on whether to close a school or build a new school, while that may be a facility decision for them, it's a community decision for us. And so we want their master planning to be a part of what we're looking at, as well as West Tennessee Healthcare and some of our other institutional partners like Lane College, some of our industry that are making decision about expansion. All that needs to come together. And so, this does not replicate, does not replace, but serves as a depository for everything we're looking at and coming up with an overarching set of goals and objectives for our community going into the future that we can plan for, that we can budget for, that we can implement to reach.
And ULI has passed its prime, and we're ready for a new plan.
ULI, we were very successful in implementing, I would say, 90% of the goals that were contained in ULI, if not higher. But we've reached the kind of the end of that, and that's why when I say we don't want to rest on our laws, when you reach the end of a plan, you're not still moving forward. You're kind of in stasis. You're in limbo, waiting to get some direction. And so, we don't want to be in that holding pattern. We want to be able to push forward. So to do that, we must create the next plan that will guide us further.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Buchanan, real quickly, all of our plans are built on what we call a foundation of engagement and stewardship. We don't, I don't like the idea, how do you get people to buy in? It seems coercive when you say get them to buy in. We try to create a sense of community stewardship where the plan is really built on the feedback of everybody. And we have engagement that is designed for crowds of a couple hundred people, down to one-on-one interviews, high-tech on the web. But we also have developed these do-it-yourself workshop kits. If you have a Bible study group that meets every other Wednesday with the men in your neighborhood, you could pick up a packet, take it home to your Bible study group, conduct your own workshops, seal everything, and turn it back in, and we'll antagonize that result as if it was a workshop that we conducted. So we try to make sure that we hit folks sort of where they live, in their neighborhoods, in their groups, with their agencies and organizations, to allow anybody who wants to participate several opportunities to do so. And that's, I know I went through it quickly, but that's all built into this process.
Thank you.
Stan, John mentioned the Bemis area. That also includes South Highland, the in business district.
It does. It does. Bemis as a collective, I think it had South Highland slash Bemis. Basically, it's the South Highland Commercial Corridor, which, you know, we have looked at that area on a number of directions and a number at that area on a number of directions and a number of different ways. But as you know, it's a living commercial corridor, but it's starting to see some decline. And when you start seeing those things, those signs, you've got to do something to turn that around, or we'll have a lot of vacant buildings and a lot of things that have moved on. And so it's important that we get ahead of that. And we have some ideas about how to do that. But one of the ways that this plan will help is it will identify economic areas that South Highland is bent toward, that has the ability to attract, and it will also serve as a marketing tool to kind of bring those things to that area. And that's the things that we see as positives. It's not going to just be, hey, y'all might try this.
Right.
It's going to be, you know, we've looked at it. These are some things that are working. These are some things that are missing that could be sought after and to shore up those areas. Because again, Jackson can't go forward without a vital South Jackson. Jackson cannot go forward without a vital East Jackson. Jackson is a sum of its parts, and no area can say, hey, they're past it. We can just move on. We have to have all areas to come up to a level of vitality, or we suffer.
And South Highland is in a very unique position geographically because people from Henderson and Bolivar, you know, would come to that area because it's closer if we did have more things to attract them.
It is. And sometimes, you know, what's missing in this, at least we've seen it in the past, is South Jackson does not fit the traditional commercial model that corporate entities are looking for because it's too dispersed, the densities are not there. But it still has vitality and viability. What this plan does is it shows to marketers that don't have time to do anything but look at their model and run their formulas, it gives them, okay, we've done this for you. Here's what we've done. Now go back and look at this information, and it helps it be more marketable.
Thank you.
Real quick, we don't know yet which subareas we're going to look at. We didn't want to presume to know what areas those were, but in working with the council's staff and the committee, we'll be able to collectively select the areas we think need studied. The list that we put up there were just sort of our initial thoughts as what they might be, but we don't know exactly what those areas will be yet.
Councilman Conner.
When you start looking at corridors and areas, the subareas, are we looking at corridors that feed in like you had downtown on there, for example, if you decide to go with downtown? Are we looking at all corridors that come into downtown, such as Airways Hollywood area to revitalize and part of the plan?
I think all those gateways are important.
And even if something, it's important to note, even if something doesn't get picked up as a quote-unquote "subarea," every area of the city and its extraterritorial planning area will get examined in detail. No place will be not examined because it doesn't happen to be in one of the subareas. But yeah, corridors are a prime candidate, for sure.
I have a question, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilman.
You had mentioned sustainability. Could you discuss your experience and then some of the ideas that you may have for Jackson relative to sustainability?
Sure. Well, sustainability, most people think of right off the bat, sustainability as being just solely environmental, and it's not necessarily just environmental. There's really three prongs. There's economic, there's environmental, and there's cultural or social.
Correct.
More and more common now, our comprehensive plans have sustainability chapters in them that we write that address all three of those components, and they establish a framework, if you will. Other plans that we do, rather than have a separate chapter, community leaders would like to see it more integrated. So what we actually do, like from Escogee, Oklahoma, if you will, if you turn to the land use and development chapter of the plan, there is no sustainability chapter, but in the back of the land use and sustainability or the land use and development chapter, there's a section on how to be sustainable with land use and development. If you turn to the transportation and infrastructure chapter, at the back, there's how to be more sustainable with regard to infrastructure and transportation. In other plans, it's not built that way. It's just in. But I would say half of our plans across the country probably have sustainability components in them. And back home, just outside of Chicago, I live in River Forest, right by Oak Park, Illinois, and I'm the chairman of the Community Works Advisory Board and a member of the board, Foundation Board. And we just developed a multi-jurisdictional sustainability plan called Planet Green, which covers all aspects of environmental sustainability. I get the advantage of bringing that work into everything that I do, including the establishment now of a report card or benchmarks that a city can use on an annual basis to measure all these five or six or 20 different criteria to see if the needle is changing in the right direction or if they're losing ground. So it's one thing to have a plan, as Stan said, but it's another thing to be measurable to see if you are succeeding. Now, because of the other work that I have as a Foundation member, I now have these sustainability benchmarks that I'm able to bring into my professional life and use these to measure success.
Okay, great. I look forward to having further conversations.
Thank you.
Any other, Councilman Wallace?
In the presentation you talked about, this is going to be a fairly large cost for the city to provide this master plan. In the presentation you gave, you, you know, mentioned several of the awards that you've won for the plan themselves, which is good, I think. But, you know, and you also mentioned not, you know, what's the plan is done, and you've won your awards, it goes on the shelf, and we don't do anything with it. I think in the past, the city has paid for some planning way back and then not followed up on it. My concern is that we follow up on it. And then from your standpoint, from your company's standpoint, can you give us a few more examples of the results that you felt like the city has received, so that it justified the costs?
You bet. I'll give you a couple. One, about a third of those awards that I mentioned are APA awards for implementation, which is not just the plan itself, but was sometimes given a year or two after the plan was adopted because the plan was so successfully implemented by the community, which is fantastic. Naperville, Illinois, won that. Bartlett won that. Palos Heights won. Those are all implementation awards that we received. I think a good example, for instance, is Oakbrook, Illinois. I'll just give one example, but the Benton Harbor example with the Whirlpool Corporation is a good example of an implementation component. And master plans are intended to be long-term, but they're not general like satellite-view plans like they used to be in the past. They're sort of a combination of vision plans and strategic plans. They're written to get things done. There are things that can be done the day it's adopted. In fact, sometimes the ideas we come up with are implemented before the plan's adopted because they don't want to wait. But a good example, I'll give you one, Oakbrook, Illinois. Oakbrook is positioned about 15 miles west of Chicago and is sort of a regional juggernaut in terms of employment, entertainment, restaurant, office. And for 30 years, it was dominant in the region. And then uses started jumping past Naperville to go out to further satellite communities. They did a national search. They hired our firm to reposition this community for the next 30 years. And I'll give you one example of a simple thing. We examined their sign ordinance. They had 15-story office buildings. The sign ordinance required signs to be at 35 feet height. And we think what happened over time is the height matched the height of the buildings. And as the building heights blew up over time, the sign height never changed. They had very aggressive landscape components. Residents loved it, but they didn't understand the implication to businesses. And as you're driving down these major arterios and you're looking at the buildings, the heavy landscaping with the 200-foot required setback and the placement of the signage on the buildings was a perfect line-of-sight block. You couldn't see any of the signs. So one of the things we said is, don't wait for the plan to be adopted. Amend your sign ordinance. We crafted an amendment to the sign ordinance for parapet signage on corporate centers. And the next day after that was signed, they signed their biggest tenant lease they'd signed in 17 years. A real, simple, practical, no-cost change that overnight dramatically impacted the economic climate of that community. I talk about all the APA awards that we've won. The most award we're most proud of came from the Greater Oakbrook Chamber of Commerce. And we're talking about McDonald's World Headquarters, Ace Hardware World Headquarters, Bliss Tech's World Headquarters, NAI Hifman, Denny Hifman, John Buck and Company, General Growth, the largest outdoor mall in the world is in Oakbrook Center, and they're the biggest retailer mall provider in the United States. This chamber of those folks, along with about 150 mom-and-pop stores, every year giving an award to the entity that does the most for economic development ever in that city. And for the first time ever, a planning firm, and planning a business sometimes is like this, that's the wrong approach. So the award we're most proud of came from one of the most powerful chambers in the Chicago region to a planning and design firm saying that we had done more for economic development in that town than any other force. And that's an example of implementation sometimes doesn't have to be tricky. Sometimes it's just seeing through the fog. You have to make things very, you know, incrementable and very achievable. So those are just some examples.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? And speaking of the Chamber of Commerce, we have two individuals here. Before I call them up, let me just kind of clarify to council what we're after here. Obviously, we have a proposed not-to-exceed number of roughly $248,000, which we anticipate being over two fiscal years, this year and next year. This year, we have roughly $78,000, Sam, if I'm right, $92,000 in something we call Community Development Fund, which is basically set aside for this particular type of the study. That'll leave us a little bit short, but hopefully with a smaller remaining number, we'll come out of fund balance. Next year, we will anticipate going ahead and budgeting for the remainder in order to complete the plan. So that's what we're asking council to consider, is not to exceed $248,000 contractual agreement to be paid for over two fiscal years. Let me, thank you very much. Let me call Roy Heatherly, who is here and chairman of the Chamber Board, and Kyle Spurgeon, who is here, the president and CEO, the Jackson Area Chamber of Commerce, to come up, if they would. Morning, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for being here. Kyle, you want to share with us?
Yes, sir. Very quickly, in the economic development business and in the chamber business, I think the old saying goes, if you don't know where you're going, any road will take you there. Jackson, from a chamber perspective, is really at a crossroads. And I think Stan said it several times, we are the sum of our parts, just like any community. If you look at East Jackson, South Jackson, North, West, public schools, private schools, public investment, private investment, that can only be best leveraged when you've got a plan. And we support this. Councilman Wallace, like any plan that you spend money on, you don't want it to sit on a shelf. I promise you, guarantee you, the Chamber of Commerce will utilize this plan. As we look at new industrial parks in this area, as we look at different ways to market the community, economic development has changed over the last 10 to 15 years. It's now become site elimination as opposed to site selection. And what we have to do is make sure that we do the things that cause us not to be eliminated as much. We have tremendous assets in this community. If you look at the new brand, Connect Here, it's really built around the things of connecting with community individuals, but the fiber network here and the interstate access are two things that we have got to tremendously sell. It causes people to look at this community. But when you get in underneath the issues that we have and the opportunities that we have, we can only sell those adequately when we talk about that we've got a plan to address those and make this a better community. So I'll tell you, from the chamber's side, we support this, and we will utilize this plan once implemented and adopted.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Roy?
I won't keep everybody. This is a great foundation, and the other thing it does, it unifies. There's so many questions out there many times from different people in the city, what if and why. And I think this unifies all the different things that are going on in our city and gives us a foundation to build from. And I'm with Kyle. On behalf of the chamber, we support this very much, and we'll make sure it's implemented.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any questions from either one of these two guys? Okay, if not, thank you all for being here. There are no additional questions. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion from council? If not council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight in favor.
Okay, thank you. Item four is consideration of contractual prismatic signs after someone informs us of what prismatic means.
I'm saving for the speech.
That was for y'all's benefit. Yes, ma'am?
They're reflective road and traffic signs. You can see it day and night.
We couldn't just say that?
Well, they have a fancy word for it because they try to confuse everybody.
Y'all didn't know it. Okay, we have, you all have a copy of that contract. Is there any questions?
Move the approval.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Second discussion from council? Council, please vote.
The motion, yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. White. Item five, is consideration proposed parking lot lease between the state of Tennessee and the city of Jackson for parking spaces located at the Carl Perkins Civic Center. Stan?
You have the materials pertinent, this lease, in your packet. And just to give you a little bit of background, the state is trying to consolidate some of their services and operations and trying to move some of those back down into the Lowell Thomas Building in the downtown area. And as you know, this, anytime you move people, it requires more parking, and they're needing to satisfy that parking need. They are asking to lease 300 of our spaces in the main lot at Civic Center. That is not all the spaces. There's about 22 spaces that we're going to retain to utilize for a little bit of overflow that we have on some uses that are around the Civic Center. It is based around not prohibiting us from using it during events. It just allows, it requires that we notify them, and the period of notification is really short. It requires 15-day notice on the events that we have planned, which Mo's Burton, who manages the Civic Center, has told me that's doable. It also allows us to be fluid. If there came an event that we didn't anticipate, all we need to do is notify them within two business days, and they will vacate the lot. So that's how it will work. If we have an event, any of the daily events, we have about four or five on the calendar each year that we have during the day, they will vacate the parking lot on those days for that, so that we can use it for the event. Anytime that we have an event that comes along that we didn't anticipate, they will vacate those if we give them at least two business days' notice. And I think this is a great opportunity because it produces some revenue on some parking spaces that, for the most part, are underutilized most of the time.
Move the approve.
We have a motion for approval?
Second.
Second discussion from council? Go ahead, council.
I noticed there's not any retained spaces there across the Civic Center. That's a little concern to me is when the state leases these spaces, will the Civic Center, Civic Center's got a setup event or something where they don't need all of it, but they need some of those spaces there, will they still be, they're not going to be towed or anything for parking there?
No, the state has told me that they're not going to run around there towing people off. They don't really know exactly what their utilization's going to be of those parking spaces. They will have a lease of 300 spaces, but they don't know that they'll be using all of those. They really don't know. But we have retained the ones that are nearest to the building on the drive side. We've also retained the ones that are around the Civic Center building itself. They're not utilized in this lease. It's just in the main lot, and it does not include the parking spaces that would be directly across from the circular drive that we could basically consider tied in with the Chamber building. It does not include those. And we retained 22 spaces that are in the main lot that were not included in the lease. Plus, there is opportunity to park along some of those streets that are, as you see some of the parallel parking that exists now. It's not strike for that, but it's room for it, and some of that's utilized too. So again, if we have an event, Mo's knows pretty much in advance, and, you know, when these major events come up, and we, all we have to do is notify them, and they will make, they're looking at opportunities where to move their people, and they'll just vacate it. There won't be, and then any other time, if they, if part of it's utilized and part of it's not, I'm sure it'll be like any other situation. If somebody's looking for a parking space, they're going to find one and utilize it, so.
And as far as the lease term, if it turns out that it does turn into a problem with the state people parking there, even though we've got a Civic Center event and the parking lot's filling up, we've got the option to?
We can terminate the lease, yes, sir. There's some termination procedures in there. So it's, we're not locked into it. It is a long-term lease, but we have the ability to terminate if it doesn't work. But again, the state has been, you know, they're needing these parking spaces, so they're willing to work with us. So I have a good relationship with a couple people that oversee this part of the process. And if it became a problem, I believe it'd be something that we could work through and work out very easily.
Is this my, go ahead, Charles.
Go ahead, council.
Stan, these unexpected funds, are they going to be designated for anything particular? Stan, these unexpected funds, are they going to be designated for anything particular?
That's up to you as mayor and council. We have not designated them to go anywhere. You know, there's two schools of thought. You can either just let it be an anticipated revenue that you didn't anticipate and let go in the general fund, or you could tie it to your facility. It's just, it's up to you.
Councilman, I would propose to council that the revenue be reflected through the Civic Center revenue stream because obviously, it's on their site. All the revenue goes into the general fund. It's just some numbers that help hopefully balance a little bit closer between expenses and revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with that.
Any other questions before we vote on the contract?
Now, how will this be paid? I mean, will it be paid by the state in one lump sum? Will we collect it throughout the year? Do they collect it?
We have forms that they provided that's an automatic deposit. So, basically, on a monthly basis, they just, it's an automatic deposit into our account. So, we've given them the information, and as soon as they get approval to enter into the lease and everything's signed, we will provide those forms to them, and the money will be automatically deposited into our account.
So, even though it's three hundred parking places, they might not all be utilized, and therefore, you know, we might not collect them all three hundred?
No, they will pay, they will pay a lease based on three hundred spaces. And then, the utilization is up to them. If they utilize all of them, they have the ability to utilize three hundred of them.
Okay.
States in the process of closing a lot of their satellite offices scattered around the city and relocating those employees to downtown, which could only be a good thing for a city. Any other questions or comments from council before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, so noted. We have a motion in a second, Anita. We have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight in favor and one abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Item six is consideration for street acceptance for Lenox Village, Sections Four, for a portion of Golden Brooks Drive and a portion of Lenox Village Drive.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight in favor and one abstaining.
Item seven is consideration of street acceptance for Station Oaks, Phase Two, Section Two and Three, Station Oaks Drive, Stokroff Cove, and portions of Union Fort Drive, Stagecoach Cove, and Winston Place.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
One quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
Bind amounts on those streets that, do you know approximately?
Together, they were forty-four thousand, twenty-four, forty-five thousand.
Okay, any other questions from council? Not council, please vote.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Stan. On the board appointments, item eight is the reappointment of Esther Myland to the CEDC.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion.